Next is the approval of the agenda. We just have one addition under consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes from, or the work session notes from November 14th, 2023. Are there any other changes?
We'll move the agenda to the second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a summary of our closed session from November 14th. City Council meeting. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We went into closed session on November 14th to specifically discuss, under the attorney-client privilege provisions of Minnesota Statute 13D.05, in relation to pending litigation, and that was specifically the pending class-action lawsuits nationwide in relation to both 3M and DuPont, which have pending settlements in relation to PFAS-related contamination in municipal water systems. So we did go in a closed session to discuss those issues, and specifically, the council did provide direction that it had to my office, that it thinks it's in the city's best interest not to opt out of those class actions. In other words, the city has received notice of its entitlement to participate in those class-action settlements, and we could opt out, but we will opt not to do that, and instead, we'll participate in the class action like most other cities, and hopefully get some money out of that.
Thank you. Next is council staff reports. On the 21st, we met to interview the applications for the finance director, and we'll be moving a little further on that, and there'll be more information to come. Last night, I attended the Lake Elmo Airport Commission meeting in Baytown. It was quite a lively meeting. And then tomorrow is, for all of you, you have a handout, too. There's a ribbon-cutting for the Lakeview EMS at 9:30 in the morning. And then on Thursday, here in City Hall, at 5 o'clock, is the Senate bonding tour. I talked to Senator Howesley today, and it sounds like they might be a little behind schedule, so it might be a little later than 5:00, like they said. And then I have the Regional Council Mayor's meeting coming up. And that's all I have. Councilmember Johnson?
The middle St. Cray watershed meeting was canceled for this month, and that's all I have. Dirk Port.
Thank you. Councilmember Liljegren?
I attended the, on the 16th, the county open house on the 58th Street Manning Extension. Talked with a number of their staff, county staff, and their consultants. And I find it funny that in those discussions and looking over all of their materials, no map of what the proposal of the project was. And in talking with their consultant, asking them a few, a number of questions about whether, you know, why wouldn't you put in a slip lane for a cheaper price versus what they're going? And the comment back from the consultant from the county was, MnDOT wasn't interested. Well, later on, talking with MnDOT officials, MnDOT said that they weren't opposed to putting in a slip lane like they did on the North Side. So I just find it a little bit funny that how things are being conveyed to the public and stuff, it doesn't seem like we're getting the full story, so.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Runk?
Okay, I was at the finance meeting, and I know the city administrator is working diligently to come up with options for us. I attended my first cable commission meeting, so I got that under. I was also at the open house that Councilperson Liljegren was referring to with the county. And yeah, it was rather strange that the one thing we went looking for was the layout to see how it was going to affect us, and they said, they haven't got a layout yet. And I found that strange, since we know that Stillwater had passed their final plat in that, based on that they had a layout that was agreed upon with the county, and that they had also taken that layout and used it to get conditional approval from Brown's Creek Watershed. So for them to not have any layout, they didn't show anything in Stillwater. That was rather strange. Secondly, was the fact that there was no mention of cost, or how it was going to be, what it was going to be, what it was going to cost, or who was paying for it. There was no mention of that. And then the third thing was, yeah, I was talking with Adam Josephson about the slip lane, and he explained that they were not taking a position in favor of the slip lane, but that because they would, they didn't, they kind of liked the idea of moving the traffic off of 36. But he said, they did not oppose it. He said, they could have done it at the time. He said, there would have been a cost, which we know, but at the time, the cost would have been less, because that was when 36 was under construction. They were resurfacing. MnDOT was doing their project, resurfacing and some structural improvements, and Manning 36, with the county was being done, so that would have been a logical time. So he said that it could still be done, but that, you know, the cost was there. And so that was, the other thing was, they just, I mean, when I made the comment to one of the county officials that, he was trying to say that the city has known about this since 2016. And I said, I was at the meeting in 2019, and I asked, and I was told by the county official there at that time, that there were no plans in the works at that time. And he turned to me and said, no one ever said that. So I guess, I don't think I was imagining things when they told me that, but according to them, I didn't hear that. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Next is Administrator Rife.
Mayor, council, just a quick update here. The next plant commission meeting scheduled for December 14th will be canceled, so just want to give that update to all you and any of the members of the public watching. That's all I had.
Thank you. Chief Hanson?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a couple things in our update on our police officer candidate pool. We went into backgrounds with four. We are still finishing up those backgrounds. One of them have been eliminated from that process, so we're down to three and hoping to get one to two for final council approval at the next meeting soon. And then our Toys for Tots campaign, it's coming up really quick as far as December 8th, so it's a little bit earlier this year is our final collection time. And then we have a couple outreach events coming up. Shop with the Cop at Walmart, that's going to be on the 12th and the 13th. We're pairing up again with Washington County Sheriff's Office, which turns out to be a great, great event. And then we have at the Community Thread, Holiday Hope will be participating again, helping handing out some of those gifts and items to Oak Park Heights residents on behalf of Community Thread, as well as Watermark Church has invited us again on December 2nd for another giving event down there, too. We'll be participating in that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant Administrator.
Mayor and council Lyndon Nelson at 14359 Upper 56th Street North was chosen as the most recent recycling award winner.
Thank you. Next is visitor comments section. This is time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council about anything. No? Okay, thank you. Move on to consent agenda. Approve bills and investments, checks 70025 to 70072, for a total of $278,618.57. Approve city council minutes from November 14th, 2023, and approve work session notes from November 14th, 2023.
And with approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor? Or wait, Jacob, can you call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes.
Forgot we had one absent here, so I almost called Chuck's name.
Bruce Hallhoff. Next, we have a couple of public hearings. So the first one is a public hearing to consider issuance of a license to allow sales of cannabinoid products and related devices at Smoke Shack Minnesota LLC. Jennifer?
Mayor and council, Smoke Shack Minnesota LLC made application for sales of cannabinoid products and related devices at their location, 14375 60th Street North. Background investigation has been completed by the police department, as well as the city's attorney's office, and notice of this public hearing was published in the Stillwater Gazette and posted at City Hall. Applicant was invited. I don't see anyone here from Smoke Shack. Staff has no objections.
Well, I'll open the public hearing, and is there anyone from the public that would like to address this? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's their motion to approve.
Before we make that motion, I just wanted to defer to Kevin, too, to see if there's any comments on whether approving these licenses would impact either a moratorium or any future regulation, just so we're all on the same page in terms of how that would play out.
Sure. And I think we discussed this sort of concept a little bit when the moratorium itself was discussed and passed by the council. So the position my office takes is that the new state law and the moratoriums that are in place are in relation to the new statute that the legislature just passed this spring. This particular cannabinoid license is issued under the old statute authorized in 2022. We did not issue a moratorium in relation to cannabinoid licenses under the existing licensing process the city has. So I would take the position, this doesn't have any effect on, or, you know, claim entitlement to a license through the state process. And frankly, I think it's really going to be up to the state to figure out what it's going to do with respect to all these different businesses who may be selling cannabinoids, whether there's a licensing process in place for a given city or not, if and when the state's process gets up and running and issuing of its own licenses. So we did not place any limit on the city's ability to issue new cannabinoid licenses, and so there's nothing that prevents us from doing this now.
Okay. And with that, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor?
I just want to make one comment. It has to do with Smoke Shack. And I've talked to Jacob about this. I've noticed that since the new tobacco store opened, tobacco and vape opened, they got lights all over the place. And I would question whether or not that was within the city ordinance. And I noticed, driving by, since they did it, Smoke Shack has now got all kinds of lights. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Runk. And I did talk to our staff about that, and we are, we are looking into that. Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, public hearing is to consider an issuance of a license to allow sales of cannabinoid products and related devices at Stillwater Bowl. Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, council. Stillwater Bowl also made an application for sales of cannabinoid products and related devices at their establishment located at 5862 Omaha Avenue North. Particularly, THC beverages is what he was looking to sell there. Background investigation has been completed by the police department and the city's attorney's office. Notice of this public hearing was published in Stillwater Gazette and posted at City Hall.
Thank you. You'll do the same thing. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address this issue?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have no old business for tonight, so we move on to new business, which is Washington County request for city support for county state aid Highway 15 and Manning Avenue, improvements for, from county state aid Highway 14 to Stillwater Area High School. Jacob, is that you?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, before you, here, we've got an application from Washington County. They're seeking regional funding for Manning Avenue. This is from 43rd to 55th Street. I should mention, two step back, that we've got folks from Washington County here to answer any questions that you may have. So as I said, they are seeking funding. This is federal funding through the Met Council. These Manning corridor improvements, and it's a little bit hard to see on the slide. It covers a large area, but essentially roadway expansion, multi-use trail intersection improvements would be a part of it. A small portion is within the city limits. You can probably kind of see the purple line there that connects the trail within the city by the high school. And then finally, other item that I'd just like to note is, they're looking at construction 2029. Still very conceptual. We're early, very early in the process. And so with that, they are looking for a letter of support from the city here, and just seeking if there is council approval to sign that letter. And again, got representatives here from Washington County answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for the county? Well, why don't you come up and introduce yourselves, anyway?
Happy to. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sarah Allen. I'm a senior planner with Public Works.
And I'm Eden Rogers, and I'm an engineer with Washington County.
So we are actually going out for solicitation for many projects, but this is one that particularly touches the borders of Oak Park Heights. So we need letters of support from any communities where we are planning projects. And if there's any details about the projects, like Mr. Rife said, it is pretty conceptual at this point, and there would be a full planning process that would take place if we were to be awarded funding. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there a particular amount of funding, or is it just into a block amount?
It's, there are categories in the regional solicitation, and there's certain amounts that are a maximum that you can ask for. We're still working out the amounts or the cost estimate for this project, and I don't have that offhand, but we can share that with you when we have the application a little more close to finished.
And when do you plan to put the application in?
The deadline is December 15th.
Another question related to funding. So I know the county has a cost share policy that we've sent letters on in the past. Would the county be looking either now or in the future for funding from Oak Park Heights in relation to this project?
It's a good question. Thank you, Mayor, council. So this project would seek a cost share, but if we were to be awarded funding, that helps pay down that cost share to our local partners.
And then additionally, knowing that, what I've seen, at least at the high school in terms of safety, are there any precautions the county's taking to make sure that any students that are using these paths are not colliding with, you know, newer drivers on the road, or kind of that safety consideration?
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor. That is part of the planning process, and my engineer, technical expert here, could probably share more details on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, exactly. When we're dealing with schools and trails and new drivers, and we always take those things into consideration, and we look at those design options. So that will definitely something. I can guarantee you, during the design process, we'll definitely be at the schools, talking to the principals, the staff there, how are people using this entrance, and figure that out.
Mike and Mike, do you have questions?
I don't. No.
Mayor, council, we can always put two in the letter if you wanted to have some kind of language about cost sharing in the future, that that would be discussed, you know, at a later date, or language similar to that.
I have a whole problem with the whole thing, but yes, I would say yes, but simply, I understand trying to get federal funding, you know, that helps. Unfortunately, we're going to have to face this at some point, to get ours down. This is not a benefit to the city of Oak Park Heights in any way, as far as putting this road in. It is going to be a large cost, putting, moving our utilities and working with all of that. I would like more assurances that that's going to be paid by the county and not by our residents, because they're really not going to get the benefit of this road.
I would agree. The only comment I would have is, why does it seem that the county only comes to us when they want something? When they want it, when they want to do something that they want from us, they come. If they want to do something where they don't feel our input is of value, they don't bother.
I just would like a little more assurance, because I still go back to like the Asgood issue, is when the bridge was built, that was supposed to be double turn lanes going north. It was in the plan. And then MnDOT says, well, we would have put it in, but the county said, no, it's not in the plan, and it's not in your CIP. And here we are years later, and it is a definite problem on that road. So what's to guarantee that we're not going to have a problem on this road? I'd like more assurances in some, some way, or, because it keeps coming back, is it's our residents that are paying the price, and they can't move around anywhere because it's somebody else's designs. Questions?
Yeah, and Mayor, I would just like to add, you know, through our process, if fundings were awarded, we began this project. We go through a full, you know, multi-phase process, where we come back to the city council for resolutions of support. And that is your option, where we are coming to along the process. We're going to come at preliminary design to approve that layout. We'll come at final design to approve that cost estimate. So there will be those checks in place, that the county will be, you know, interacting with the city to have those checks in place, that we can make sure that the city is on board with the layout and plan.
As far as going for the federal funding, I would have no problem supporting that, but I really want caveats down the road, that if it comes back, don't come back and say that this was the assumption that you approved this part-blank, because it's not going to be.
I would agree with the mayor. If we do send a letter of support, we'd have to include that this is no way, I mean, an endorsement that we'd come back with funding. And I also think we have sent a letter on the cost share policy in firm opposition, and that in denial of doing a cost share, which would likely be reiterated in this case, especially with the King Plant closure the year before, this would be set for design and construction.
We all know how tough it is to get those federal dollars, so I can understand that. Any other comments on that? So is there?
So just, I'm sorry, Mayor, just to make sure I'm clear. So comment about the layout, you know, our support of this, or providing that letter doesn't mean we're putting the layout. And then secondly, obviously, the funding part, too.
And if it needs to be in large font, bold, underlined, highlighted?
And in the cost share, I think we could probably copy and paste from that previous letter. I think either Councilmember Runk or I could probably dig it up if you can't find it.
So with that, go ahead.
Do either of you have comments? Are you guys okay with sending that letter of support with those caveats?
I'm not. I'll be voting no.
Okay.
I'm not in support right now. I'd like to see more and have all that stuff in front of us before I...
I guess I have learned not to trust. We don't have.
Okay. Well, and I think at that point, it might not be worth making a motion if it's going to be.
No, it won't, it won't pass.
Yeah.
So it's a tie.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to get some more information.
But you could relay back what our comments were.
Definitely.
And you guys have until the 15th, and I think we have another meeting in advance, so we can always bring it back.
Yeah, if you want to put more information, other than just this letter, the way it is this way, and say that this is in no way that we're going to endorse it, or if you want to work on that, too, or work together with our administrator, you certainly can bring it back to the next meeting. And then our other council member, hopefully, will be back by that time and have more discussion. But if you could really just relay our comments, too. And we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
It's nothing against them personally.
No, yeah.
Everybody's got a job to do.
It's other officials that we've dealt with in your...
Okay, and then we'll move on to the XL Energy Substation, conditional use to allow security screening fencing at 5789 Stagecoach Trail North. Jacob, are you doing that?
Yeah, I guess I'm putting my planner hat on here. So just have a couple of quick slides here. Just, again, just want to reorient everyone and any residents watching at home, just the subject property. So 5789 Stagecoach, this is on the far east side of town. So XL is seeking a So XL is seeking a conditional use permit. Couple facts here about it, obviously. Two, I mentioned XL Energy is a petitioner. The zoning is open space zoning district. So electrical substations are permitted use, so that use is permitted. The conditional use permit is required for the 10-foot fence that they're seeking. And then finally, just from a comp plan perspective, it does meet our comp plan requirements of, it is an industrial land use. The site plan, and a little bit difficult to see here on the graphic, but they are seeking to replace the eight-foot fence that they currently have out there with a 10-foot wood fence. So on the northwest and south property lines, that's where the wood fence would be. On the east property line is where a 10-foot black chain link fence would be. If you look, and you can kind of see on the site plan, that far southern area, there is a little parking lot area where there's an existing chain link fence that's going to be subsequently removed. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission about landscaping. After hearing from the petitioner, the Plan Commission decided not to require any landscaping. Their goal, XL's goal, is to try to keep out all the animals, critters, and I think there was some concern about if landscaping is required, that might induce the opportunity for animals to get in that area. And rightfully so, XL is trying to keep everything out, and that's why they're putting that screening security fence in there. So with that, Plan Commission did recommend approval of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We also have the petitioner, Brian here with XL, if you have any questions for the petitioner.
I know the residents around there will be really excited. I brought this up about, I think, at least four years ago, to have that screened in, and I do understand, because I live right across the street from it. And the turkeys, the pheasants, and the deer are quite lively around there, so I think it'll look really nice. So thank you very much for finally getting this done.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. Jacob, can you take the roll?
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will it be done this winter? Probably not. Thank you so much. Next is well number three, EDA Grant Administration Assistance Stampup Proposal, Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you have probably already reviewed, we put together a scope of services that includes assistance for the EDA grant. As you can see, I've kind of outlined a few of the hoops that need to be jumped through in order to administer this grant and ultimately obtain the funds for the construction of well number three and the pump house. And so we had our kickoff meeting with the EDA back in October, and after that, we got started on some of the items in the first part of the list in the memo here, the prior to bidding and award items that we need to complete. We were authorized at that time for $5,000 to start with the assistance. At this time, we're asking for an additional amount of $20,000 to kind of keep us going. Hopefully, that amount will take us into the construction part of the project. It's a little hard to fully prognosticate exactly what the effort is going to take with this type of a grant, but we, you know, we will do a very diligent effort at keeping track of the expenses and, you know, what it's taking to get this done. And if, you know, there's a future budget adjustment necessary, we will certainly report back to the council at that time.
And I just confirm, too, Mayor and Council, this is a laborious process here. And it's not just city engineer time, but staff time is dedicated to it, city attorney's office as well, and so there's a lot of parties that are involved in this. And so I can certainly let you know and confirm that this will be well-used dollars.
And that $20,000 will be coming from the grant funds, correct?
We will be...
Will that be coming from the renewal replacement?
The grant funds are purely for construction of the project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Runk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move down to council appointments for 2024. And there's the list that was given to everyone from the list from last year. The only change was, we did have, after the fact, a change for Mike Runk and Carly Johnson for the Middle St. Croix.
And Cable Commission.
And the Cable Commission, correct. And then also, in looking at the list, now Betty will be retiring, and she's our data compliance officer, so I didn't know if we should continue with that until her retirement and then look at changing it, or leave it as is for now.
Could we do an alternate, like Betty and/or, and at this point, just put in, I mean...
Her replacement when that name comes in?
Well, have her replaced, but for the moment, in case we don't have a replacement, put in maybe Administrator, right? Or someone else that might be able to kind of have that role if needed? If that, it's okay, before volunteering?
Put Betty Caruso and/or question mark, what was that?
Or whoever else you want.
I think we need to put somebody. Is there someone that...
Somebody else?
You'd recommend this?
Yeah, I'm fine with just having my name on there.
Or Jen, whichever.
Or if Jenny wants to sign herself up.
Oh, boy, sure.
So we'll put Betty Caruso and...
And/or.
And/or Jen.
Yep.
And then Chuck couldn't be here tonight, so he called me earlier today, and he said he would like to keep with the same appointments that he has.
Yep, me, too.
Yep.
And anybody else want to change anything or stay the same?
No.
And Mr. Kramer, you are the alternate for Lake Elmo Airport.
Put me on, make sure that they put me on the...
I will. But we have to change the name of it. It's not Jasbe anymore, it's called Leac. It's Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission. So just change that name on there.
Thank you.
I will do that as soon as I get home. And then everybody else is okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the new update?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljegren.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. And then next is the 2024 city council meeting dates. I talked with Jen about this. It's always nice to have things on our calendar way ahead, so that we know what's coming. So I had her put down, like, the conference in DC, or at National League of Cities, if anyone is going, primary election day, National League of Cities. And this one, the fall, always tends to fall on a council meeting night. And because we have to canvass election results, looking at possibly having that meeting on Thursday or Friday of that week.
I'd recommend the Thursday that week.
Okay. And have it on the 7th, that way we can canvass the election, and then still need that second meeting for November, as is.
Is that enough time for...
So according to state statute, we cannot canvass results until the third day after the election, so that would be the 8th would be the first day we can canvass. Now, in years past, because of the new early voting, they haven't been able to get us our results that soon, so it works best if we could go closer to the 10th day after the election, which is November 14th.
Oh, so move it to November 14th, Thursday, November 14th?
If that works for council.
But that's...
Still might conflict.
Right. Because it's the... We didn't put the dates down. Oh, let's see, let's go out this far first. I don't know if it does or not.
I might have a planner that goes that far.
Here we are, here we go.
No, they're good.
Okay, because the conference is, or Sunday.
We would if we had to, though.
We've had calls, special things for, you know, five-minute meetings in the past for something that had to be acted on, so if we have to do that, we have to do that.
So would we want to say it is a Friday? Would we want to just start at 6:00 PM or a different time?
That's fine.
6:00 PM?
That would work for everybody else.
I think at that point, it might make more sense to do it at a midday or something, instead of having staff work on Fridays, as well as...
Sure.
The members of the public. I don't know how many members of the public want it.
Do it at 4:30?
Yeah.
4:30?
Or 4:30? No, because if it's, if that's the only thing we're going to have on there, and then if the meeting for the 12th, it would have been the 12th, we could just put everything back to the 26th, and just have just the meeting, just for the canvassing, and if there's anything that's really crucial that has to be put on that agenda.
What do you want to do, 4:00 PM or 4:30?
I would do 4:00, and that way everybody can leave then.
Okay.
Is there, would there be anything on the budget end that we'd need to do at that meeting?
We shouldn't have to, because we don't have to.
I don't think so, yeah.
We should have a pretty, the preliminaries should already be done.
Okay.
Preliminary done, TNT wouldn't be until December.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
December, so we should be good on that. And then also, I sent it to Jen, there's other things coming up, like the dates for the National, or the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. When that is in June, that's in Rochester this year.
Yeah, and Mayor and Council, those dates did not conflict with a regular meeting date.
Neither did the leadership conference, it's like in February.
Friday and a Saturday, yeah.
And then Mayor's conference, that's kind of up in the air right now, whether it's going to be in May or April, or if they're going to do the regional meetings like they did this last time, and it was going to, like, six different places. I think they're doing a survey right now, and it sounds like the consensus is to bring it back and do just one thing. So that one's still up in the air. But that shouldn't evolve anything else.
Besides these conflicts, do we want to still do, yep, summer plan as well? Cancel the first meeting, it's June, July, and August.
I think so.
And last meeting, December? Perfect.
So we'll just follow that same calendar, and then just other than the National League of Cities, we should be good on everything. So is there a motion to approve that calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Liljegren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And are there any other council items or announcements?
Just a reminder, with the gingerbread competition coming up, just so that no one can forget this year.